Last thing is, and again, this has been brought up. These smart meters these days accept coin, card, debit card, pass cards, or cards you can get at the city building, plus there's the various phone apps that are associated with a lot of the smart meters. So I've heard the same thing. I've heard individuals that are going, "I like being able to use coin. These meters accept coin." They just don't accept dollar bills.
Okay. I'm going to move on to comments from the audience. Is there anybody who'd like to make a comment? Yes, Ms. Roman? If you could give us your name and address, and if you represent a group.
I represent a group. Judith Roman, 12 Northwood Drive, Athens, Ohio. And as I've said the last two times, I disagree with the 8:00 parking. I think it should stay at 6:00. And as far as people -- well, first of all, I'm going to address the parking garage. I won't go in that parking garage. It's going to be fixed up. I think it should be fixed up and be safe before you change it to 8:00. Because people don't want to go in there. I mean, I've talked to people. They don't want to go in there. They don't think it's safe, especially women don't want to go in there. As far as changing it to 8:00, I have not talked to one person who agrees with that. In fact, one person told me they thought the city was greedy. So that's kind of what people are saying out there. I don't know what council people are hearing, but no one that I know of agrees with the 8:00 time. And then when you talk about people that are working in the different businesses, where are they supposed to park? They can't park on the street. If you don't have waitstaff, you can't have a restaurant.
Okay.
So that part, I just don't understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience who has comments? Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval of 10318. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay. The motion carries 6 to 1, and the ordinance is approved. We'll move on now to ordinance 10518, and this is an ordinance amending the 2018 staffing levels authorized by ordinance 15117 and declaring an emergency.
Sorry, my microphone.
Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 10518.
Second.
Basically, we're taking a position of custodian and changing the fund from which that person is being paid from, since their duties are split between our recreation department and the community center. So we're making an adjustment so that their salary is poured out of the most appropriate fund.
Thank you. So we have a motion and second for approval of 10518. All those in favor. Oh, are there any other questions or comments? Excuse me. First. Okay. From either council members or the audience. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We have two ordinances, or several ordinances, excuse me, for second reading, several of which will be suspended tonight because of time pressures that we have. Ordinance 10618 is an ordinance granting a revocable license to Cameron Fuller, owner, 97 Columbus Road, to allow an existing concrete pad to encroach on the city right-of-way. It's introduced by Councilmember Fall. Ordinance 10718 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $323,411 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes pre-UCL issued for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring a new pumper truck and related equipment and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules for 10718.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that the notes for the payment are due, I believe, October the 19th, which is very close. So in order to meet our payment date, we'll need to suspend.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules on 10718. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reisner.
I make a motion to adopt 10718.
Second.
We've discussed this. We are paying a debt on our, what we consider the new pumper truck. We're paying down $100,000, and now we're -- so we'll be left with a debt of $323,411. We will have notes borrowed from our local banking. I'm not quite sure which bank it'll be, but we know.
Yeah, we're all set to go. We're talking about it.
Okay.
Okay. And so we have a motion and second. Before we take the vote, could I have everybody double-check their phones to turn off the dingers? Somebody's getting text messages, and it's just a little distracting. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, any comments from the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 10818 is an ordinance amending the 2018 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
I don't believe this has to be suspended. Just to be sure.
I believe it does.
It does? Any comments from the clerk?
Not from my own.
No?
No. So if we don't need it for the parking garage debt fund transfer for the parking garage, then we don't need to suspend this one.
However, the next one.
The next one we do.
The next series are for Halloween, and unfortunately, because of approaching deadlines, we will need to suspend these series of ordinances.
They're not mine.
10918 is an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 26, 27, and 28, 2018, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens on Halloween weekend and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you. I would like to suspend the rules for 109-18.
Second.
And like President Isley said, time is of the essence as Halloween is fast approaching, and this is the last council meeting prior to festivities.
Okay. So a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
President Isley, I would like to adopt ordinance 109-18.
Second.
And this is the first in the series of four ordinances that will clear the way for Court Street to be reimagined as Halloween on October 26, 27, and 28. That's a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And let me just read this, Section 1. This is to ban parking on Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter, so from end to end, and other essential intersecting streets on October 26, 27, and 28, 2018, as necessary. It's going -- this will close the two vehicular traffic. This is Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter and essential streets. And then the last point is to employ, as necessary, uniformed members of the Athens City Police Department and other city employees to preserve the peace and other public orders. So I want to thank them in advance for the efforts that they will be putting forth.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance, 10918. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right, we'll proceed with the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance is approved with that motion. Ordinance 11018 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise for scheduled bandstand performances hosted by the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee on October 27 and 28, which is Halloween weekend, and declaring an emergency. Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, I would like to suspend the rules for 11018.
Second.
And same reason.
Motion to suspend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you. I would like to adopt ordinance 110-18.
Second.
And this ordinance is to suspend our noise ordinance, so it'll allow the bandstands to play on. And we had Brandon Thompson in last week from the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee, and he mentioned that there was no huge changes this year. So we look forward to them doing a good job on this part of our city history.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and second for approval of 11018.
President Isley.
Yes, Mayor Patterson.
Just a real quick comment. There is one change to the stage location this year. I don't know if Brandon Thompson didn't mention that.
He talked about it.
Fine, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So motion and second to approve. All those in favor? Oh, and any other comments before we move on? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 11118, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on October 27 and 28, 2018, Halloween weekend, and declaring an emergency. Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, I would like to suspend the rules for ordinance 111-18.
Second.
And it's the same. Yes, deadlines, exactly. Thank you.
A motion. We have a motion and second to suspend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
I would like to adopt ordinance 111-18.
Second.
And this is the special vending atmosphere that we will set up for Halloween, and I would stress to vendors that are thinking about vending in the Uptown area during this weekend, that they have until October 24, by 4:00 p.m., to contact the code office, yeah, the code enforcement office, to learn details, sign up, and be registered to vend.
Okay. I have a motion and second to approve ordinance 11118. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Crowell.
Just one question on being new to council since last Halloween. How many vendors pay the $50 fee to have electric? Is that a common? Do we know? I mean, and do they? Is this provided through the light poles?
It is. It does come -- or some bring their own generators, but.
But they don't -- that doesn't pay the fee, right? I mean, that's.
I can speak to it. It's about half, I think.
Is it really?
Yeah. There's a city-owned power drop at Court and Union, and a city-owned power drop at Court and State. And then we'll run a panel and set it up for folks to plug into. And then there are others who have their own generators, and that's how they operate their buggy. There is a change to state fire code as it relates to spacing of vendors, and we're going to be enforcing that this year when we lay out the setup there. And so there may be, because of the spacing, a little bit farther spacing in between vendors, that there might be a couple more that will choose, rather than run cables, that will choose to run off of a generator.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So we have a motion and second to approve this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11218 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 7.05.26(c), regulation of city parking garage rates on October 26, 27, and 28, Halloween weekend, and declaring an emergency. Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I would like to suspend ordinance 112-18.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Rules have been suspended.
Thank you. I would like to adopt ordinance 112-18.
Second.
And this final one in our set for Halloween weekend, which is October 26, 27, and 28. This will suspend the regulation, the enforcement of the city parking garage rates, so those will be suspended on October 26, 27, and 28, 2018, Halloween weekend.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 11218. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, the ordinance is approved. We now have some ordinances for first reading, and I believe several of these will also, because of deadlines, need to be suspended. 11318 is an ordinance establishing East Park Drive as a new public right-of-way, and this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. We talked about this during committee. We also have a map, right? Do we have the map? We have the map, we can put it up. This is down by the new pool and area between the sewage treatment plant and the pool and all that area where the road is. And we would like to establish a new public right-of-way because of the amount of needed services that are already in place in that area. Most of the services do not follow the roads, so that wouldn't be a very good way of going forward with trying to capture these so that they can be mapped and that they have to come to the city and the city council and the administration to be able to do certain things within that right-of-way.
And we see a map of the general location on the street right now. Council members have been provided with a copy of the plat map as well, so.
Right. But it doesn't have anything to do with the sign.
Right. It's just the right-of-way at this point. We're discussing.
Ignore that part.
Okay.
So you have anything else to add to that particular description?
Sure. I can speak to this. As many of you are aware, there's a new building that has been built at the office complex kind of at the end of this proposed right-of-way. Currently, their access to East State Street, which is the public way or the public right-of-way that that particular property fronts on, as far as having frontage on a public right-of-way, is via an easement granted in the early 1950s that goes through the middle of the city swimming pool. So in order to create a correct situation, we've proposed that East Park Drive, which has been named a named street with addresses assigned on it for a couple decades now, actually be platted as a proper public right-of-way to be able to provide frontage for that new building that is back there. Additionally, should anything ever happen with the City Dog Park location on that side of town, this also would provide frontage for that parcel as well onto a proper public street called East Park Drive. The last benefit of making this change allows the city to grant permits to utility companies to locate along East Park Drive, as opposed to granting easements to those utility companies to locate there. The benefit to the city is that in the long term, should the city require those utility companies to relocate, those private companies to relocate, it would be at their expense if they're there by easement. However, if they were, I'm sorry, if they're there by permit, they're there by easement, it would be at the city's expense for them to relocate. And this is not a problem for us here today. It's a problem for those of us sitting in these chairs 25 or 30 years from now. So we're trying to do the right thing by them. So that's the purpose of this request.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Crowell.
Does this impact the bike path in any way, and what kind of signage we're going to have there to protect people on the bike path?
It does not. This particular public right-of-way, it doesn't cross the bike path at all. The driveway that accesses the business that I was referring to does cross the bike path. There will be a revised easement that will come back before you that will, rather than have the access to a public road, go through the city swimming pool and go out to East State Street, and will come out where the driveway actually runs right now, across the corner of the community center property, to East Park Drive. And that would be, you know, the revised easement for how they cross the, how patrons for those businesses cross the bike path. Through our Title 41 process, we gave guidance to the owners of the building there, and they have to make some changes to their signage. And the word I got back from them today is that they're just waiting on fabrication of signs, and a couple more weeks and they'll get those signs changed. Specifically, we directed them to implement a stop control on their driveway where it crosses the bike path, because in our opinion, the bikeway is the major route through there in the driveway, or is a minor route, so it's appropriate for the driveway to be stop-controlled.
Have we had any discussions about putting additional signage on the bikeway to warn bikers and pedestrians that they are coming to a point that the road crosses the bike path?
Right. Yes. I mean, if you want to get into the specifics, I can show you the direction that I gave to them, but right now, there are yield signs at this crossing on the bikeway itself. Those would be flipped so that there would be warning signs, the diamond warning, intersection of head slides, and then the stop signs would be moved to the driveway.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, administration. Along the lines of thinking that Councilmember Crowell was asking, what ideally would you like to see for the stop control at that location? The signage or the stop control?
I mean, a proper MUTCD, R-1 sign, which is a full-size stop sign.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Kotzis.
Yes, thank you. So going back to the right-of-way, so is this just historically just cleaning up from the old airport? Is that just with that age?
The easement that the property was given to access East State Street back in the 50s was granted by Ohio University. Interestingly, it actually says that the owner of the underlying land would maintain it for the property owner to do so. And I'm assuming that was something that was necessary in order for the development of the airport, and that because the property owner that was on the other side of the railroad tracks or closer to the river at that time would be losing access, and so, you know, in order for the airport to get bought. I'm just supposing that that's what occurred back then. But effectively, that's what we're doing, is we're cleaning that up.
Okay. All right. Ordinance 11418 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code, Title 29, Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.22, Water System, Section 29.24, Water Heating Facilities. Introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. We talked about this last week also. This helps to update our regulations to be in line with the ORC about who is qualified to be able to install a water heater system in residential units.
Okay. And it is changing it from that they should be by licensed plumbers to following the manufacturer's instructions. Yes, Councilmember Reisner.
I just want to state again, as we discussed here last week, committee, I just don't think this is a good idea. I really don't. I think just as a matter of public safety, a licensed plumber should be the person who installs a hot water tank. I know there's a lot of gifted amateurs. I've watched This Old House for 40 years. I've watched Norm and everybody do this, and there's lots of YouTube help videos out there, but I have no way would I be qualified to put in a hot water heater, especially a gas one, or even electric. I'd probably electrocute myself. We live in a city. You know, what happens in one house, you could say, "Well, that's my business," but it's really not. If I make a mistake installing it, I could burn my house down, and maybe my neighbors, too. So then it becomes a matter of public safety right there. So if something isn't broke, I say we don't fix it. I don't see a need here at all, and when this comes up for a vote, I'll be voting against it. So I recommend other council people do the same.
Councilmember Kotzis.
Yes, thank you. You know, I just have one question. I wanted to connect with Code Office Director Rick Saroyes, and I've yet to do that, but I had a question about, so as a homeowner, can I, what other building things can I and can I not do? Can I, could I build an addition? Can I do my own electrical? Can I do my own roofing? Is a water tank the only thing that we are not allowed to do?
Mayor Patterson.
If I may.
Yes.
What is really interesting about this section of code is, many years ago, we did licensed plumbers. I'm not sure if we licensed electricians as well, but we licensed a lot of the trades for home building. We don't do that anymore. And when we stopped doing that, a lot of code was changed to reflect that, to where it was stricken from code about having to have a license. This was one piece that stayed in, and it was not by intent that it was left in. It was an oversight, and it stuck in, and everyone now thinks, "Well, this is the only thing." Member Kotzis, I agree. I have sat for, I won't say hours, minutes, pondering over, "Does this mean I can't replace the junction box in my house because I'm not a licensed electrician?" Well, I can. Code doesn't tell me I can't. I could see equal peril, I guess, while I'm not an electrician, and I wouldn't do it anyway. But I think you get the idea, is that, Member Reisner, this, again, this is going up the code, which was antiquated the minute it was left in to be something to where you had to be a licensed plumber after the city stopped licensing plumbers.
I understand that, but there's other licensing. There's state licensing. There's union licensing. I mean, there's other forms of certification to indicate that a person is qualified to do that sort of thing. Otherwise, you just have any Johnny come lately, say, "Oh, yeah, I can do that. No problem. Thank you for the money. I'm on my way." Thing catches on fire. Who do I sue? What do I do? What's my recourse? So I don't know.
Thank you for the comments. I appreciate that. Anybody else have any comments tonight? So we introduce it. Councilmember Crowell.
Just to follow up, because I want to be clear on this, both for myself and for the public. I was under the impression that there were things that we could do in our own homes that we own, but that if we were going to hire somebody to come into our home to do electrical work, for example, they had to have a license. Is that incorrect?
It's a little, it's a little bit more, it's a little grayer than that. I think for private residents, I think that you can have, you know, a lower level of capability, handyman service, that type of thing, whereas a commercial-grade work in a commercial business or a multifamily-type business, you had to have a state license. Again, to the mayor's point, the state took away municipalities' authorities to license trades decades ago, certainly years ago, maybe not full decades. And this was a provision that when we updated our code, we didn't strike this one. The reason that we're asking for this change is because we are finding ourselves in the middle of battles between plumbing companies that we don't have the authority to regulate. And so this basically gets us out of the battle between those plumbing companies. And if you'd like to, I'd highly recommend you sit down and spoke to co-director Saroyes, and he would give you all the glory details on some of the battles that he was pulled into on that. And this will allow us, and in many cases, the manufacturer's instructions say, you know, are certain conditions to be installed by a licensed plumber.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. We'll move on to ordinance 11518. This is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA federal local let project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the construction of a pedestrian crossing on Richland Avenue, Project Number 311, and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, at this moment, I would like to suspend the rules for ordinance 115-18.
Second.
And the reason is, once again, we, the administration would like to put this out to bid on October 31, and so this is the last council meeting prior to that.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Rules have been suspended.
President Isley, thank you. I would like to adopt ordinance 115-18.
Second.
And this is the, one of the, this is the, can I call this the final piece to this, to getting this project out to bid? So this is the Richland Avenue pedestrian passageway that will go between West Green and Porter Hall and Grove, Grover?
Grover.
Grover. Thank you. It's been a while since I've been running around down there. And so this is, it's just a contract between the City of Athens, allowing ODOT to do work on our city property. property.
Member Katsas, you are correct. Grovener is on one side of it, Grover on the other.
Okay, there we go. Yes, yeah.
But it was West, you said West Green.
I was more of a Bentley person. That's where I hung out.
All right. We have a motion and second for approval of 115-18. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Thank you, President Nisley. I, I do have a question. I saw somewhere, and I'm not sure where it was, that we were applying for some federal funding for this project. Is that accurate? And perhaps it's been granted?
We had mentioned, I had mentioned to council months ago about still exploring other funding mechanisms. Timing-wise, this would line up with the Transportation Improvement District funding, which will fund up to 25% or $250,000 for a project. So this is one within District 18, of which we are in that Transportation Improvement District that we will likely apply for and seek funding through that funding mechanism. That'll, that typically occurs in February, if I'm not mistaken, the, the funding cycle, February, March.
That must not be it, and thank you for answering that question. I, I don't know where I saw that figure, but I, I was under the impression that somehow the city was obtaining some federal funds for this. It's my understanding we have some state matching funds, and the, the university is chipping in something. Is that correct?
Right. I mean, per previous ordinances that have come before this body, there's one, approximately $1.8 million in federal funding that we awarded some time ago. And this is the final, I guess, nail in the coffin in order to do that. The LPA agreements are, are just the contractual agreement that the city ends up signing between itself and the Department of Transportation, which is the administrator of that federal funds. Unfortunately, the Department of Transportation doesn't prepare that document until the very end, after the plans are filed with central office, and then we get that. And unfortunately, in many cases, it's, it's right before we're trying to go to bid, hence the, hence the suspension and rushing.
Okay.
Could that help you, Member McGee?
Well, it does, but I'm, I'm still wondering what the city's share of the project is with that information.
I'd have to look at the previous ordinances that this body passed, because I think it was reflected in there. There, I mean, the, is the LPA agreement attached?
The, the agreement itself? Yes, it is.
It might, it might specify in there.
It's just exactly this. Right. The only thing that is, oh, and the only thing that we have, the only math that we have is that the total project is three point, about $3,098,000, and that we are getting 1.8 in federal funds. And I hear what you're requesting, Councilmember McGee, some additional math on that. Right now, what we're doing is moving on the LPA agreement, so I think we can provide the math details.
I'll provide that to you. I'll go back and look at.
That'd be helpful. Thank you so much. Okay. So we have the motion and second for approval of 115-18. All those, any other comments or questions before we do take the vote? Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. I just want to express my support for this, and again, safety is paramount, and I think this will be a move in the right direction. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 116-18 is an ordinance extending the pilot residential parking permit program for one year, and this is introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Nisley, thank you. We, we had Citizen Joan Croninski attend committee meetings last week to, to talk about the, the first year that this residential parking permit was a pilot program in, in her neighborhood and, and some other, the other streets in her, her area. And this, it's something that we, looking at, we see that it was well thought out. It was something that, that was brought forward by citizens, and the, I think the big takeaway that I had from my meetings was that we, we collected 12, 12 permits. So I think we're, we're still looking to see if this will continue to grow in kind of an organic-type fashion, and we can collect more information and see how this works. So, we're asking to just extend the, the pilot for an additional year and then see where we're at in 2019.
Great. Thanks. Ordinance 117-18 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court, Washington and State Streets on Monday, October 9th, 2018, from 5:30 to 8, for trick-or-treat hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Nisley, I would like to suspend Ordinance 117-18.
Second.
And this, this is the last council meeting that we have prior to October 29th, when this event is, so we, we need to get this moving.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
President Nisley, I would like to adopt Ordinance 117-18.
Second.
And this was, at committee, we, we asked about this last week. We kind of had a little bit of an inkling that this was coming up, but now we, we know for certain. It is October 29th, and that is on a Monday, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. This is put on by the Athens Uptown Business Association, and this is their trick-or-treat. And so I'm, I'm glad to see that they, that we are moving to, to close the street again and open it up for, for the, for the kids to kind of have a, have a different experience on Court Street.
We have a motion and second for approving 117-18. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember McGee.
I would like to say that I, I think this is a wonderful event. I've gone to it and participated and passed lots of candy to the kids who come to this. It's, it's exciting. If you're a student, I hope you have an opportunity to see that side of Halloween in Athens. That being said, I do want to express a little concern that I have as far as the timing of when the parking meters are bagged. It seems to me that, in the past, that they've been bagged awful early, perhaps as early as 1 o'clock or 1:30. And if there's any way that those could possibly not be bagged so early so that the citizens who are trying to park and do their business before the street is closed could be done, I think it's something that should be considered. Thank you.
Mayor Patterson.
Member McGee, I agree with you 100%. Last year, I believe, we, we started bagging at 3:00 PM. I think this year, we will be somewhere in that timeframe as well, so that we're giving relief to those who are parked and, and, but we certainly don't want to orphan cars within the event area either. And, Member Katsas, I know you're sitting there just thinking, this is the last one.
Yes.
And it is, when it comes to Halloween. I have spoken with the YUBA, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, about the timing, so I'm, I'm letting council know that I have really kind of mandated that they bring things forward in a more timely fashion so that we aren't having to expedite things through and suspending the rules and whatnot. So, the YUBA and the Chamber have heard it, and that they will certainly make sure this is on their calendar a good four months in advance to where the timing is better, as well as for the big Halloween event, so that council isn't being pressed to hurry and push ordinances through.
So maybe we can back up all of our ordinances?
Correct.
For all of the Halloween, by a few weeks? That would be a help. Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. I just want to clarify a couple things. My understanding is the parking garage will be open? Yes, correct. Thank you. And then, that's the fifth Monday of the month, so am I correct in understanding that council will not be meeting that night?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and second for approval of 117-18. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The ordinance is approved. Ordinance 118-18, an ordinance amending the 2018 appropriation ordinance, and this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. This is one of those typical boring appropriation ordinances we have to go through. Allow me to read this, so the public knows where their, their money's going.